Okay, hello everyone. So before we get into the Queens crime update, we're gonna talk about the breaking news last night from the New York City Council. So officially now, the city of Yes Housing Plan has passed two key committees for the New York City Council. And at the moment, we are looking at the full council voting in City Hall on Thursday, December 5th. So that would be about a week and a half out. The date was set by City Council Speaker Adrian Adams. And as you could see here, there she is. So you have Adams and Adams being all buddy buddy, Adrian and Eric, right? So let's read the update from AM New York. So here's what we know. So it's the struck final deal. It was a $5 billion commitment from the Adams administration, Eric Adams administration, to fund Adrian Adams Council housing priorities. So we know that the city of Yes Housing Opportunity, it would be a bundle of proposals designed to make it easier to build a little more housing in every neighborhood. Seven-member zoning subcommittee and the 11-member land use committee. It passed the former panel by a four to three vote, and the latter panel was an eight-to-do decision by one abstention. So last night, Mayor Adams spoke to reporters. Said the committee's passage of the plan was quote "a historic moment." City of Yes Update zoning rules will governing where and how much housing can be built in certain parts of the five boroughs that have not been touched since the 1960s. The mayor told reporters last night, "Nothing has been done like this in over a century. This is an amazing benchmark that we are putting down in our commitment to deal with housing in our city." So we know that there were ongoing 11th-hour negotiations that were going into last night. The vote took place over five hours at New York City Hall in Lower Manhattan last night. During the first committee vote, Staten Island Councilmember David Carr, Republican, made a motion to try to derail the vote with support from fellow Staten Islander Camilla, let me make sure I'm reading this name right, I do apologize, Camilla Hanks, but it was swiftly vote down. Carr characterized the process by which the plan was crafted as a one-size-fits-all approach that was rushed through the administration and did not account for areas that did not have the infrastructure to handle more development. Councilmember Carr said, "This process, what the administration claims is going to result in a little housing everywhere and yet somehow will not tax our already overtaxed infrastructure, simply does not make sense." And then, not to mention that unrelated note again, we know the housing values went up once the de Blasio administration changed the, you know, zoning laws to allow more multifamily housing units to be built. So again, December 5th, we know the date. So we know that the plan is designed to produce 100,000 units over 15 years. With the changes, the number has been lowered to 80,000. So we obviously know there's a housing shortage in New York City. It's not just New York City, but you know, the whole country is facing a housing supply shortage. And so that's why, for an example, you look at the realtors around Fresh Meadows, they keep knocking on doors desperately trying to look for people to sell because they want money. And they know a million dollars can get them a lot in this economy, even before the Trump administration comes in. So yes, just gonna mention that parking mandates. Yes, another altercation was to propose to eliminate the mandate that would be constructed with a certain number of off-street parking spaces. So again, uh, that would be controversial because on the Upper West Side and the Upper East Side, Manhattan south of 96th Street already has no parking mandates. And then it's already gonna get worse once congestion pricing starts on January 5th. Because we know a lot of people are gonna try to park their cars above 60th Street to pay the nine-dollar tolling fee. So just more taxes and more nonsense as usual. So nothing ever surprises me. So I do hope, and again, there is a bipartisan effort to try to stop this. Alright, there is a bipartisan effort. And you know, I wonder how many people in the council, both Democrats and Republicans, are really gonna open up and show us who's gonna sell us out? Because we already know Tiffany Caban, who represents Long Island City in Astoria, we already know she's selling us out. She wants more housing units in Northwestern Queens. Okay, I get that, but you're gonna screw over the rest of the borough. So we'll see. Stay tuned for updates. Uh, we're gonna talk more about it because, uh, yeah, let's hope that this is struck down in the council on December 5th. Alright, so we're gonna start off with our Queens update. Now, the reason why I am posting this here, that is because this will be the last police update from the 107 precinct that will acknowledge the interim Police Commissioner Tom Dalton before Jessica Tisch becomes Commissioner on Monday. And I wanna mention that there's also a traffic stat report that the 107 precinct is also reporting. So let's just focus on my precinct because, you know, it's important to bring that up. So the good news is, it looks like crime has gone down, which is good news to see that. So no homicides reported, no sexual assaults reported, robbery, there was only one robbery reported, which was on 184th Street from what Sergeant Nunes at 107 precinct was saying from the, um, Fresh Meadows Homeowner Civic Association meeting last night. Um, let's see what else we got. Um, felony assault, the good news is assault went down. Three more or less felony assaults than last year at this time. We have two less burglaries. Now, in terms of burglaries, they are only counting the burglary attempt that happened on 184th Street back on October 10th, where the suspects accused in that case were accused of throwing a brick at a window. They were able to get away because the homeowner was, frankly, shocked and called 911 right away. And it looks like grand larceny down from 15 to nine. So in total, no noticeable crime change, but we are noticing that crime is going down somewhat, which is decent news. Retail theft is going down. Sergeant Nunes also said last night that beginning today and going through the remainder of the holiday season, the 107 will start patrolling the Fresh Meadows Shopping Plaza. Obviously, people want to feel safe as they're shopping during the holiday season, given that we have less shopping days than we did last year. So again, very good that we are seeing crime year-to-date going down, which is very good news, you know, from a historical perspective. You know, you look at it from the Giuliani Bloomberg years, you know, there was some noticeable stuff, but listen, with Big Brother watching you all the time, it doesn't surprise me that cameras do deter criminals. So thankfully, with modern technology, it always somewhat does help. Alright, now let's go to our collisions and our accident reports from the 107 precinct that was from November 11th to the 17th. And hopefully, we'll talk more about this as we go into the holidays. And obviously, with the new year coming up, I would expect that these numbers are gonna tick up with the amount of collisions that will happen, probably anywhere from the obvious dates, I would say December 31st, which would be Tuesday next month, and then going into the new year, which would be Wednesday, January 1st. So the good news is collisions are down in the 107, that's good news. We had 40 this time last year, we're down to 27. Collisions from injuries, 26 down to 15. Total injuries from accidents were down 3424. Good news is, we have three less pedestrians struck by a vehicle this year. And it looks like motorized two-wheelers are down. Now, keep this in mind, we still remember that accident that occurred back in August at 73rd Avenue and 184th Street, where we all remembered that SUV thought he had right of way. The motorized bike came out of nowhere, and that's what led to that accident that made Channel 7 over the summer. Um, looks like we have something very alarming, and this is, uh, something that is shocking for this precinct. We have one DWI arrest in the precinct, which again, very shocking for a precinct that, uh, most people do not consume alcohol in this area. So that is kind of concerning to read that. Parking summons is, good news is, the double parkers are only down to one. Bad news is, two people were ticketed for bus stops in the 107. And, uh, let's see what we got here. So it looks like six less people disobeyed street signs, probably the ones that were going past the stop sign. We have four people ticketed for using a cellphone compared to five this time last year. Four people ticketed for texting on their phones. However, this is very concerning, six speeding violations. Six now, that is not good for this time of the year, considering that, uh, yeah. Hopefully, nobody's speeding on Main Street in downtown Flushing on December 25th because we know a lot of the Jewish businesses by Jewel Avenue. I've heard from a lot of the store owners, they plan to be open right before sundown on Hanukkah. So that's what I've been hearing, a lot of the speeding complaints do come from Main Street, especially in the overnight period, because we know how straight Main Street goes. A lot of other complaints from Sina Boulevard, and then, of course, the overnight periods at Long Utopia Parkway. Now, we have 11 summonses handed out for red lights. Here's something else that's very alarming. We have 46 people ticketed in the 107, and most of those, from what I've heard, come from people who are impatient to make the right turn. And we're also getting word that a lot of people are violating the new right turn sign at the northbound Clearview Expressway and Union Turnpike. If you are not aware, the DOT, Edeas Rodriguez, has put yet again another ploy to our neighborhood. He has decided to make the right turn from Union Turnpike onto the northbound Clearview Expressway illegal. And so that's why that number might have ticked up. And then, not to mention, you might have some people visiting from Nassau County who probably forget, you do not make a right turn on red here in Queens. Here's something else that's alarming, right of way to pedestrians going up. Lack of seat belts going up. Tinted windows, I found that from the 107. The tinted window complaints come from out-of-state people, which doesn't surprise me. Alright, then we have, uh, livery and taxi, tickets gone up. And of course, the motorized two-wheeler. Yep. There you have it. Lot of behaviors gotta change, folks, it's really, ugh. So we'll do another update, hopefully, um, I'm hoping the first week of December will see how the crime did look around Thanksgiving week because I do wanna see those numbers specifically and especially because, you know, I will thank, you know, I have a name right here, I do wanna specifically thank Jim Galwick, or one of my neighbors. You know, I don't wanna do it on a bi-weekly thing. I wanna focus it more on when how, this is just an example of how we're gonna do this. But yeah, look out for the week of December 2nd or the 9th. But I'll definitely do a Thanksgiving report for my precinct because that, that should be made available to the public, I do agree. Especially because, you know, you don't need the NYPD dig-deep-in-foil request. So now, let's talk about what's going on in my neighboring precinct, the 111, AKA the precinct I used to live in by Rocky Hill Road, AKA the precinct I currently work in, which is patrolled for Ossom Hall Nursing Home. Alright, so let's get into our first incident in Bayside. Like, three incidents we're gonna talk about in Bayside, 'cause I'm trying to organize what we should talk about. So first up, we're gonna talk about this incident. A hate crime being reported at the 7-Eleven on Bell Boulevard. Quote, "Trump will deport you." Hate crimes tax force now investigating anti-immigrant incident that occurred on Bell Boulevard. So this incident occurred right after the election, look at that, November 6th. Police from the 111 precinct in Bayside reported that the suspect approached three men, ages 19, 24, and 43, and a young 14-year-old girl in front of the 7-Eleven store at 41-00 Bell Boulevard at 11:30 PM. The suspect is accused of following the four people while shouting racial slurs at them. The suspect is accused of reportedly using anti-Spanish immigrant language and told them to go home. According to the hate crime complaint, quote saying, "Donald Trump is going to send you back to your country. Trump is going to deport all of you now," according to the 111 precinct, adding that the four victims are native Queens County residents. The suspect fled the location on foot in an unknown direction. No injuries, thankfully, were reported during this incident. So we do have a suspect description. So this is what we have right here. So it looks like, um, yeah, it looks like there's a, yeah, look at this, cellphone video, look at that. One of the victims actually took a cellphone video. So he has a white t-shirt, blue jeans, work pants, work boots. And it looks like he has several tattoos. So obviously, he's on the run, but, uh, yeah. If he's found, uh, you know Melon the Cat's is gonna throw the book at him. Because again, we do not tolerate that here in Queens, we do not, no. Alright, everybody knows my point of view. If ICE knows something, especially because, you know, the military knows something, let them do their job, alright? Please just do not dispute this type of language. Please just let ICE handle it, and please just let the military handle it because rumor has it, the military's coming to New York City once Trump is sworn in in January, so let them handle it. God, people just gotta learn to keep their mouth shut, jeez. Another incident, right down the street. White Castle, Bell Boulevard, and Norvern, three men sought for shumping two teens before stealing their AirPods. When did this happen? Oh, look at this, this happened on my birthday. So it says here that this incident occurred on Friday, November 8th. Three suspects are accused of attacking two 16-year-old boys. According to the Queens Courier, it is reported that they were in front of White Castle at 213-17 Northern Boulevard at 10:30, when the three strangers emerged from a black Honda minivan and confronted the youngsters. A verbal dispute escalated into violence where the assailants began to punch out the teens. The perpetrator snatched the teenager's Apple AirPods before speeding away from the scene and the Honda minivan traveled westbound on Northern Boulevard towards the Clearview Expressway. The teens sustained minor injuries but were not transported to a local hospital. Yeah, 'cause I'm thinking, if they had injuries, they probably would have been taken over to Cohen's in New Hyde Park. Because this would have been a pediatric thing that, you know, would have been handled properly. Okay, I'm just figuring this out. Oh, and then look at this. Through November 10th, the 111 precinct has reported 54 robberies so far in this year. One more than reported at the same point last year. Assaults are down 87 to 80, so that is good news at least, so, yes. Just wanna confirm that. So we do have a, um, surveillance video. So according to Crime Stoppers, we have a suspect, yeah, okay, one of the suspects, okay. One of the suspects is in their late teens or early twenties with dark hair. One wore a black t-shirt and black shorts. Second suspect had a beard and mustache, wore a black hooded sweatshirt and black pants. Thirty-seven had a goatee and wore dark gray long-sleeved shirt, black pants, and black sneakers. So here's a good look of him. Hang on here, I'm thinking, did they go to Marfa's? Yeah, it looked like they, yeah, this looked like they might have went to Marfa's. This does not look like White Castle. I'm thinking, after this incident, did they go right up to Marfa's? Never know, they might have. And look at that. Might be very possible that the 111 probably went over to Marfa's because I know the cops on the 111 very well. They'll either go to two places, and they have two favorite places they'll like to go. They'll either go to 7-Eleven, right by my nursing home, or they'll either go to Marfa's. So I'm thinking, maybe one of the detectives might have went to Marfa's, asked anybody for surveillance video. Because I'm thinking, this was probably shot in Marfa's, just my opinion, but. And then lastly, our last incident on Bell Boulevard, when did this happen? November 6th, broad daylight. Same day as the hate crime incident that was reported right in front of 7-Eleven. Alright, so this is what we know right now. An 85-year-old man withdrew $1,700 in cash from an ATM at the Citibank at 39-01 Bell Boulevard shortly after 11:00 AM. He then crossed the street to 39th Avenue and waited at a bus stop in front of 39-12 Bell Boulevard. So that's literally right where the Q-13 and the Q-31 bus stop is. Around 11:15 AM, a stranger approached him and dropped a handful of coins on the sidewalk. As the man bent down to assist in picking them up, he handed the coins back to the stranger, who then walked away. It was then that the 85-year-old man realized that the near $2,000 in cash he had just withdrawn at the bank nearby had been taken from his pocket. Thankfully, the good news is the victim was not injured. Crime Stoppers has released surveillance images of the suspect and described him as having a light complexion, a heavy build, and a beard and a mustache. He wore an olive-green t-shirt, ripped blue jeans, blue shoes with white stole, sunglasses, and a black baseball cap, so here he is. I'm thinking, this might have been from a nearby, oh boy. Did he go to Bayside Dairy Farm? I think this might be from Bayside Dairy Farm, because I could tell by the layout. That might be Bayside Dairy Farm. Wow, I mean, how are these criminals going to the nearby businesses and they're not realized that they're gonna get caught by our surveillance video? I mean, these are dumb criminals at work as usual. Just unbelievable, folks. So I'm gonna read five more articles because honestly, that's all the patience I have for the remainder of this video. So, let's, uh, organize this, I wanna make sure that this is organized properly. So as of November 22nd, as I am recording this video, at this particular time in the five boroughs of New York City, we are now up to seven people stabbed. Seven people stabbed in New York City this week. I mean, if nobody is addressing the mental health crisis that we are facing right now, then I don't know what else is there to say. And by the way, I wanna mention, the man in the Upper West Side who's accused of stabbing a tourist, that is a good mom right there. That is a good mom, alright, because if I did something stupid and, you know, or something violent, right, and I ended up on the news, I'm pretty sure my mom would call 911 on me. I'm pretty sure the likelihood of my mom ratting me out wouldn't go high. So that is, that is a good thing that that guy got caught in the Upper West Side who stabbed the tourist. So as my mom overheard that comment, let's get back on the subject at hand. So let's talk about the two most recent stabbings. We have one reported in Staten Island, and then one's report that just occurred last night in Jamaica. So the first one in Staten Island, sadly, I have to report that in this incident, in total, four people stabbed and killed with a knife in New York City this past week, so very unfortunate. It is Friday, it's been a long week for everybody, and now we have to talk about it yet again. So let's read when this happened. So we have a suspect, he is named as DeShawn Baker-Dunning of Brooklyn. So there is an update from the Staten Island Advance, we'll read the other article in a bit. So here's what we know right now. A 32-year-old man was stabbed to death in Stapleton on Wednesday. According to an NYPD spokeswoman, the victim was stabbed in the chest in the vicinity of Bay and Wave Streets just before 5:00 PM. The victim was taken to Richmond University Medical Center in West Brighton, where he succumbed to his injuries. So we have an update to this story. I'm trying to see if I can, please tell me I do not have to take care of these ads. My goodness. Alright, hang on, I'm gonna have to get rid of this. Alright, I finally fixed the Staten Island Advance, so here's what they're saying. The Advance is reporting that the victim stabbed is DeShawn Baker-Dunning of 32. He is from Gravesend, Brooklyn, and he was found mortally wounded when this incident occurred, so very unfortunate. And I can't believe I had to disable my ad blocker just because the Staten Island Advance told me I couldn't do so. I'm, just messed up. Okay, next incident. We have another stabbing, this time in Jamaica. Police are currently seeking four suspects. This actually was first reported by Adam at Loud Labs, New York. So thank you to Adam for his first reporting this. Detectives in Jamaica are looking for four robbers who violently stabbed a man while stealing his cellphone on Saturday night. So wait a minute, um, this is not the right report. I wanna confirm something here for a second. Alright, looks like I have the right video, I found it, okay.
Queens, a man stabbed in the chest in Jamaica. This happened on Setfen Boulevard just after 11 o'clock last night. Police say the 22-year-old victim was involved in an argument inside a deli before he was stabbed. He is currently hospitalized, so far, no arrests have been made. And the man charged with the deadly stabbing spree in Manhattan.
Right, okay, so yes, I figured, I knew I saw it on Instagram, I was like, I hope Adam posted it on YouTube, so he did. So it actually wasn't Adam, it was actually Usman who got this video, okay. Because I knew Usman very well, he's Adam's cameraman. I'm just making sure I had the right, the right video. Okay, so this is another incident, so apparently, we had another incident that occurred on Saturday last week, okay. So let's read this one. Detectives in Jamaica are looking for four robbers who violently stabbed the man while stealing his cellphone on Saturday night. Cops say the bloody robbery occurred at 7:53 PM on Saturday, November 16th, in front of a Wendy's at 138-42 Jamaica Avenue. Officers from the 103rd precinct found the victim, a 21-year-old man stabbed multiple times in the stomach and abdomen after responding to a call for help at that location. Based on a preliminary investigation, police learned that four unidentified suspects approached and attacked the victim forcibly removing his cellphone while also stabbing him. They were last seen fleeing on foot around Jamaica Avenue before police arrived. The victim was taken to nearby Jamaica Hospital where he was listed in stable condition. And obviously, we know that, uh, yeah. 103rd precinct's not a safe area to be in. So far, no arrest. So according to the CompStat, 103rd precinct has a 20.3% jump in robberies while 391 incidents this year compared to 325 at the same point last year. Assaults are up 18.9%, 692 incidents compared to 582 last year, so there you have it. I mean, again, not a good idea to be in Jamaica if you don't have to be. There you have it. I mean, again, not a good idea to be in Jamaica if you don't have to be. Now, this should have gotten widespread media attention, but it didn't. Armed robbery in Astoria, when did this happen? My birthday! Police say the incident happened at six forty five P M on November eighth, thirty two dash seventy eight Steinway Street. Based on a preliminary investigation, police learned that of. Two unidentified suspects entered the location and threw the victim, a forty year old man, to the ground. They fired multiple shots, striking him in the leg and torso. The perp stole the victim's watch and then fled the location on foot in an unknown direction. The victim was taken to Elmhurst Hospital where he was listed in stable condition. So far, no arrest. And uh. Yes, so at least the good news is in the one fourteen shootings are down. We have five confirmed through November third, down from twenty two at the same point. However, robberies have gone up. Fourteen point three percent, two hundred thirty to two hundred sixty three, so um. All I'm just gonna say is this, Trump better be the modern day Richard Nixon. We need Ronald or back. That's what old Dick Nixon used to say, alright? In order to have a country, you need to have laws enforced. And I hope he's right, really hope he's right. Okay, two more we're gonna read, we're gonna talk about a very scary incident. We have a transit crime to report and then we're gonna wrap up with squatters. And again, thank you Melinda Katz for cracking down on it. Alright, so here we go. Sexual assault reported on a seventeen year old girl onboard an M T A bus in Jamaica, so I figured. Typical behavior in the one oh third precinct. Mm-hmm. Happened last Friday, November fifteenth. The Q eight bus was approaching Southern Boulevard and ninety four Favion just down the block from the Long Island Railroad Jamaica Station. The stranger approached the girl at around seven P M, he allegedly forcibly touched her and then pulled her down onto his lap. Before running off the bus. The victim was not injured during the encounter. The suspect was last seen running towards a hundred first avenue and a hundred thirty third street. Nearly a mile away, three blocks west of the Van Wick Expressway in South Richmond Hill. So, yeah, very disturbing. Through November seventeenth, the one oh third has reported one hundred nine sex crimes so far in twenty twenty four. Twenty nine more than the eighty reported at the same point last year. Transit crimes also are going up, thirty reported so far last year, ten more reported in twenty, ten more reported in a twenty report at the same time as twenty twenty three, so. Very, very alarming, let's give you a suspect description. So according to Crime Stoppers, he has a light complexion, then mustache and beard, he wore an olive green vest. Over a blue hooded sweatshirt, black pants, black and yellow sneakers, black backpacks, so let's watch the surveillance video here. If you recognize him, please call the police, that's all I'm gonna say for that. And it looked like this bus was pretty crowded. Yeah. And look at that. This is the criminal justice system failing our youth as usual. It's so unfortunate, folks. Alright, last incident coming in from Queens District Attorney Melinda Katz. Her office is reporting that three squatters are being criminally charged with occupying a home illegally in St Albans. According to the complaint from Melinda Katz herself. And of course, from a Queens grand jury in Kew Gardens. They are accused of illegally occupying a vacant home in St Albans single family where they were using electricity without paying. And kept multiple pit bulls in the basement. Three people were arrested back on Tuesday, November nineteenth. Drew Jackson. Time out here before I read this, no way. Folks, i- if you are a millennial and you watch Nickelodeon, you will know that name very well. Because that was actually a title character of a Nickelodeon show played by Kiki Bommer. I'm like, what? There's no way this person's named Drew Jackson. Let's continue reading. Salem Solder and Sania Altar. Were arrested back on Tuesday, November nineteenth. And they were arraigned in Queens Supreme Court in Kew Gardens on five count criminal indictment. Charging them with criminal trespass, burglary, theft of services, and other related crimes. The rightful owner's family noticed the unauthorized activity in the home after the property was vacated earlier this year. A subsequent investigation determined the alleged squatters who were not residents of Queens County, New York used the St Albans home as their unlawful permanent residence. Queens District Attorney Melinda Katz said in a press statement. My office has prioritized removing squatters on the premises while dealing with cases of criminal trespass. So it looks like they moved into the home illegally back in the spring of this year. Yes, they noticed that there were activity inside the house and notified the NYPD. So there was a domestic incident reported back on July thirty first of this year. So, yes. There was a dispute, I'm not gonna read details about that, that's T M I. But this is the disturbing thing. There were pit bulls inside the house. And look at that, the A S P C A had to get involved. Oh, and look at this, poor dogs. You know, this is no way for them to be treated. That's the thing that I wanted to read. Alright, so they were also charged with between larceny and criminal possession of stolen property. Hmm, that's a good question cuz it mentions that. Security cameras and a PlayStation five might have been involved in that dispute, so was it possible it could have been stolen? That's a good question. Queens Supreme Court Justice Gary Merit in Kew Gardens. Ordered the defendants to return to court on January ninth, twenty twenty five. If convicted, they will face a maximum sentence of fifteen years imprisoned at Rikers Island, so there you have it. Unless the small jail gets built in Kew Gardens, then we really don't know. Alright, so that's it, I'm done. I think we've gone through enough in one video for today. I gave you your city of your update, I gave you your Queens crime update. So we're done, I'm done, that's it. Uh, try to enjoy your weekend. I know Thanksgiving is coming up, can we just have some peace and quiet the next couple of days cuz. That's all we're pretty much asking for. So until the next one. Stay safe out there, please take care.